We got a problem.
What?
Reality's here. He's trying to crash the party. Reality? Who let him in? You're sad that people are mean? Well, I'm sorry. The world is in one big liberal arts college campus.
I don't have an agenda like I want people to do something. I need them to do something. I want them to avoid irrationality.
I guess what interests me is just like what interests everybody else. It's just sort of what feels, what feels real.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to another edition of Real News. This is Real News number 92 to be specific. There's that copyright music that we get a strike for every single morning. I absolutely love it. My name is Mr. Henry David Shyne Thompson with us. Zig over here from PA way. We're all together doing the thing. How are y'all doing on this morning? August 4th, I believe it is. Man, is it really the fourth already? I don't even know what just happened at times. Like these last couple of weeks has just been flying by for some reason. Nine oh one in the morning. My name is Mr. Henry, by the way, like I said, David Shyne Thompson, Zig here. Let me do greatest audience in the nation appreciation segment real quick. Then we'll introduce everyone going around. Greatest audience in the nation appreciation segment. If you're brand new to the program here, the motto of Real News is essentially this. We initially started this whole, this whole endeavor a couple of years back on the AM FM side out there in Knoxville, 92.3 FMA of 760. We did that where we wanted to start as a scenario by which a situation where we could have calm cordial dialogue and exchange with people that we disagree with. You know, we just want to have conversations. Back then you couldn't talk at all and it's getting a little bit closer like that now. But fast forward a couple of years and our boy shine added onto the back of that. We want to be able to have a situation by which we can have calm cordial dialogue with those that we disagree. So that when we do have disagreements, it's amongst friends and neighbors, not enemies. It's a very important distinction there. So as part of building that community under that motto, that mission statement right there is part of doing that. What we like to do every single morning is start this thing out called the greatest audience of the nation appreciation segment because we love y'all. We love this community. We love what we're doing here. That's the reason why we do it. We don't do it for the likes and the shares, although we do say, please do like and please do share. Cause we're trying to manipulate that Zuckerberg algorithm. Oh, Zuck will get you every time if you're not careful. But we like to manipulate the algorithm. So do the likes, do the shares, do the hearts, do the care hugs, do whatever you're gonna do. Just get the word out there. Let us know how you're doing during this segment though. What are you struggling with? Where are you at? Any prayer concerns for anything good vibes sent your way? You have businesses that are trying to innovate, get them on the program. Let us know. We'll interview them. We've done that in several situations before, especially when the shutdown was going on. What books are you reading? What philosophy you're into? What's riding, driving your life? All those kinds of things, right? One thing I want to show out throughout there during this, this greatest audience in the nation appreciation segment. My buddy Phil, he's part of the Real News family. He's actually a newer member of the Real News family over the past couple of months here. He's been working on with us here in Nashville on the, the Nashville taxpayer property, Nashville taxpayer protection act. This thing getting rid of the 34% property tax increase. Our buddy Phil just called me yesterday and we were having a conversation. We chat, you know, from time to time. And he said, Hey, you know, real quick, if you could keep me in your prayer concerns. He's going in on Friday for surgery for a cancerous tumor that was found on a part of the colon that you don't want to find it on. His doctor told him and you know, he, he is totally fine with it. Apparently he has total assurance in God that's going to be healed and that a great physician being what it is. Apparently his wife had terrible cancer problems. It was miraculously healed as well. So they're going in, doing surgery and stuff right now. Keep Phil in your prayers, keep Phil's family in your prayers. They're freshly moved over here from New Zealand, literally not even American citizens yet, and just love the country so much. And so frustrated by the property tax increase in Nashville, they came out to help. The first time I met him, he's like, look, I can't even vote yet, but I want to help you guys do what you're doing. We just believe in activism. We believe in the cause. Great, great guy, good, strong Christian family. Pray for Phil. Hey, my name is Mr. Henry. Welcome to Real News. This is what we do here. We get intimate with each other. David Shyne Thompson, let's introduce you, see how you're doing, and then kick it over to, to Zig boy PA way. See how he's doing. What's up buddy? How you doing East Tennessee?
I'm fantastic this morning. Good to see you both. I'm excited to do the show today. I'm still waking up, drinking the first cup of coffee today, but good to see everybody. That's right. That's right. And, and good morning Zig.
Hey, it's the first time I've been able to be here in a while that you've actually been here, man. I miss you so much.
Yeah, I kept having to work on Tuesdays. I had to drive to Franklin last week and then I think we didn't have it the week before. And then the week before that I was in Georgia. Doing some political stuff, but great to see you this morning, man. Good to have the Tuesday Real Friends Action Team back together.
With our powers combined, we are real.
We're like the Real News Justice League. Evil doers beware.
If we had shirts instead of Real News Action Team.
I would wear those shirts. I would have no problem wearing those shirts, man. Real News Action Team assemble with our powers combined, right?
We're like, we're like Channel 7, you know?
We, we just have all like the reject superheroes captain planet comes and joins us somewhere. Oh, that's awesome. Hey, Judy said in Facebook, speaking of greatest audience in the nation appreciation segment before we introduce Zig. Uh, or sorry, before we move on with the show here, Judy said in Facebook, good morning, I'm getting better. That's fantastic. Judy was feeling a little bit down, a little bit sick, a little bit rundown last couple of weeks here, or last week in particular. So awesome Judy. We need an applause button right there. Fantastic to hear that you're feeling better. Continue prayers for, for Judy out there. Eric says that he's praying for safe gathering this Thursday. That's right. This Thursday, Joe Jorgensen is having an event. Libertarian Presidential candidate is having an event at Centennial Park. I believe it starts at six. I'm fairly certain this information, you go find it on Libertarian Tennessee's page over there. Uh, I think Eric might be showing up for that thing. So, so you know, safety for everyone out there, all this stuff like that. Jonathan said, I'll bring headphones back to work when this thing settles down a bit. Not sure what that means.
He was having trouble with sound, but I verify, like I turned on. Yeah, I turned on the, the stream on my, on both my phones and it seemed to be working okay. But if anybody else has sound problems, let us know in the chat.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
But you may have your video on Facebook muted. So make sure that like on the screen that you unmute the Facebook video. Awesome, but could be the problem.
Speaking of whatever screen you're using, I got the unified chat going here. So if you comment in YouTube, Twitch, Facebook, doesn't matter where you're commenting from, I will see that comment. We will address it. The comments are what drive this program and which drives the commentary, what drives the show. Being this nine seven, let's get into the show. Zig, shine, everyone included. The story that I'm starting with is one that kind of frustrates me on a slightly personal level. Up at the legislature, Zig bringing you up to speed here. So we shut our legislature down, you know, right when this COVID stuff started, started hitting off. You know, February, they shut it down to not let people in. And then towards the end, they went into full recess and they came back for a short period of time. And then at the very end of coming back for that short period of time. At the very end of coming back for that short period of time here, there was two bills left on the table Zig. One was expansion of telehealth, telecare, telemedicine. And the other one was these, these liability protections, COVID-19 liability protections for, for businesses. Essentially saying that we're going to have to add some type of protections for businesses. So people can't just, I suppose arbitrarily, that's what it would end up being. But, but America being as litigious as it already is, we don't want people going into businesses somehow contracting, getting, coming down with COVID-19 and then citing any random business they went into for that day. It would be absolutely catastrophic for the businesses, for the, for the legal system itself.
Or suing the state of Tennessee, right?
Well, yeah, or suing the state of Tennessee, I guess.
Yeah, or municipalities or counties, which is probably more likely at this point.
So we had these two bills left on the table Zig. And the way that it went down is that the house wanted to pass the telehealth thing. The Senate wanted to pass the, the liability coverage. And they sort of made this weird sort of not backdoor deal with each other, but they essentially kind of came to a general agreement and said like, you pass ours and we'll pass yours. Had something happened in the 11th hour, people got in Twitter spats, you know, personalities got involved. And they never passed anything. They just let it die. They let everything die because attitudes won out. Well, now finally fast forward to where we are today. This is the Tennessean headline coming in on Sean, I'm not sure if you're paid wall bill to Tennessee. And I've already been shut down this month. Oddly enough, quick aside here, I just so happen to stumble upon the realization that the overwhelming majority of sites that I get payway, paywall by, whether it's New York Times, Washington Post, Tennessean here locally, I get around that by just having a pocket account. I don't know if y'all use pocket. It's what I used to aggregate all of my news sources throughout the day. Anything I find, if it's YouTube video, if it's a Twitter link, if it's just a hyperlink to an article, doesn't matter. I'll hit my pocket account. It'll go to this really awesome little unified area. It's like a landing page for everything. And then I use that pocket account to do show prep on. So anyways, if you want to get around paywalls because you hate the New York Times, Washington Post as much as I do, you're not going to give them a single dime of your money or the Tennessean. Get a pocket account, get around it. Anyways, that's in the show notes. That's how I got around it. Here's the update Zig, and I want to kick it to you after this. So weeks after these two chambers failed to come to an agreement on legislation surrounding civil liability for coronavirus. Governor Bill Lee has called Tennessee General Assembly to return next week for a special session. I didn't, I don't know. I don't know what else you can do besides shake your head on this one. Lee issued an order on Monday asking members of the legislature to return to Nashville at 4:00 PM on August 10th to take up the matter, which will extend broad immunity to businesses, schools and other entities against COVID-19 related lawsuits. There's the first part that was left on the table because people's attitudes got involved. Because people's egos got involved, because they got in Twitter spats. And that's exactly what it was. These aren't my words. The Tennessean actually reported on this earlier on. This is not like private information that I know because I was up there for a little while. It's not, it's widely been reported on. Here's the other going forward. Per the governor's formal call, the general assembly is also expected to take up two other bills. It failed to pass before adjourning in June. One is expected to expand professionals abilities to offer telehealth services and encourage insurers to cover these costs. While the other bill would increase penalties. I don't want to get into that one yet. We'll save the other bill here. The other bill is very important, unrelated, but let me kick it to Zig. So here's the story we have now, okay? We had these two things on the table when the session was already in. Egos got involved, Twitter spats happening. And Zig, when I say Twitter spats, I literally mean somebody else calling somebody else Pinocchio. That person that was called Pinocchio then said that it was a knock against his Italian heritage. I mean, it got weird, bro. It got, it got sophomoric. It became sophomoric.
I think Pinocchio was said in Germany. Yeah, I'm pretty sure that Geppetto, I don't know though. I have no, I really, no, maybe it is Italian. I don't know, but it sounds like a sensitive guy to me is all I'm saying.
Zig, let me ask this buddy first, it's sort of a two parter. First of all, y'all have any situations like that up in Pennsylvania? I would imagine you have to have some egos getting involved. And secondly, you know, I don't know, man, what can locals do about something like this? Where it's just, this is just asinine now. We already, we went through this once already. Now you gotta call a special session just to fix what you screwed up the first time. Go ahead though, buddy.
Well, the things like this do happen in PA, but perhaps on a deeper level pertaining to some bills where, where one party will retaliate against another based on a controversial position. So they'll put an amendment in there to, to mess up a good bipartisan bill. And really in that case, the only thing then we can do is just insist on compromise. But the, the other point that I wanted to make is this, this is just one of many reasons that, that highlights why elected officials should not be using social media. Elected officials don't need to have another avenue to get into needless quarrels than destroy good, good legislation. But also too, to some degree, it's immoral. You have constituents, your constituents live in your state or locality or wherever. But you're broadcasting all this information out to the world, to people who are not your constituents, by which those other people can then get involved in a political process that they're not supposed to get into because they're not a constituent. And that's, that's an issue.
Let me ask you just by way devil's advocate is, is a follow-up to the whole Twitter conversation. One of the very first things I said, an open statement that's on the record and it's going to live in infamy. It won't, no one cares what I've ever said. One of the very first statements I ever said to, to a television program, remember when they came in, Sean, they interviews and they specifically asked me about this, this idea I had where I thought, I thought the best thing Trump could have done after he was elected was delete or at least no longer use his personal Twitter account. That was just my personal assessment. I always thought that that was going to cause more harm than it did good. It was going to cause more trouble than anything else. And I even, I thought at that point, I was like, I thought, okay, at some point this guy's going to start making major decisions via this Twitter account. It's going to get real weird. It's going to start to, to look, the optics are going to be strange.
He might fire an FBI director with it, you know?
Well, that's, that was actually a good move. Anyway, I'm getting digressed.
See, see, that was a good move.
Yeah, that one was, right? But that kind of proves the point. See, that's what's so after about how Sean comes in with this commentary. Cause that's kind of the point in what I want to play devil's advocate back at Zig a little bit is I say that, and I could see the reason for not having the, the social media account. But I look at some of the things that Trump has done and I look at the way that Congressman Burchett uses his Twitter account. Whether you love or hate him, I don't know. It doesn't matter, but as soon as Burchett leaves these committee meetings, he has this terrible angle. I'm talking like a 30 degree up angle from the bottom of his chin, quadruple chin and everything. It's an awful, awful angle, but he's walking through the halls of Congress, kind of a cool thing. It's sort of like a fly on the wall type approach back thing of like, as soon as you're leaving the committee meeting, he'll give you updates in the committee meeting directly horse's mouth, so to speak. Cutting through all that nonsensical minutia that you get from mainstream media. He will tell you, now it's the bias from Congressman Burchett, but you know what you're getting with Burchett. He'll tell you exactly what happened in the competing meeting as soon as he's leaving, as he's walking through the halls, doing it, right?
And he scooped major news organizations several times on big stories by doing that.
Right? And so this is what I'm saying Zig, I can see the terrible side of having a personal Twitter account. I could also see the benefit possibly of having a personal Twitter account. I don't know, man. Where do you come from that?
The, the issue is that by, by providing so much free news to Twitter, to some degree, you're indirectly harming the community that you represent. Why not have a working relationship with the folks at the paper? And you could just have your information published directly in that local paper to, to bring people closer to a community product. Twitter is not a community product. It's a network. And I think it's, it's representative's obligation. Again, instead of giving away so much free news to help build up their local area and build community. In a lot of cases, these folks are the centerpiece of their individual community. And instead of building other people up within their communities to participate in the newspaper, to participate in politics in a meaningful way, they just go and blather on social media. That's a moral wrongdoing to the people of the community.
I completely understand where you're coming from. Sean, you want to chime in there too?
I can't help but agree. He's so right. He's so right. By engaging people in the community to be the conduits of the dissemination of information. It increases community.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and obviously there can be like some corruption there a little bit where like you could have a, a prominent news person or radio or television personality like be in the pocket for a senator or house member, a local house member or senator. But that particular kind of corruption is like worth it because like I've lived through it where you have that. Like we had that in Knoxville. I, I was alive. I was working in media when that was still a thing. And it's still kind of a thing, but it's not like it was even 10 or 15 years ago. Where you had these working relationships with your congressman and senators and like, just like Zig said. And it increased engagement, increased, I don't know, because like the, the personalities were invested in it too. So you just had more people invested in what's going on. Now, when it's going directly to people, there's less people invested in disseminating that information, if that makes sense. So Zig, like I have to, I have to completely agree. Cause like I've been in that world and it was better marginally at least than, than this is.
Well, and, and we often want to increase oversight and accountability, but we don't want to do it in ways like what I just suggested. But factually speaking, local newspapers are the best way to increase accountability. So government officials who support accountability by definition have an obligation to support their local newspaper. And the, actually the, there are studies out there saying that, that when people don't look at their newspapers, the taxes go up in, in those areas. Now that's not, that's obviously not verbatim, but you have less people being able to audit government when the government doesn't participate in the local media. And that's, to me, that's, that's one of the biggest problems we have in our government is that they're not, they're not engaging people in the right way.
Well, and, and all this is somewhat contingent, and I stress somewhat contingent of, upon your, your local media sources still being locally owned or at least locally sourced or locally something. Cause some of the Tennessee.
Like two local reporters at our newspaper. Everybody else lives in California or something like that.
One of the biggest issues Knoxville was dealing with, at least the latter portion of, of the real news days was that Rico Knoxville stuff. And I can't tell you the number of times that we made this whole, an entire story about the fact that, that Tennessee or the Knoxville news signals coverage in particular was coming from a single author. The Knoxville news signals coverage was coming from a single journalist who lived in Mississippi, but a Knoxville issue. Now that's not to say that he couldn't research it properly, but dude, if you're not living in the city, interacting with the people every day, physically seeing the city that you're talking about drastically changing for an issue like recoding the entirety of the, of the whole city. It just gets a little bit off. And sometimes you get coverage like this here from the Tennessean, which I'll finalize the story. I will move on to the national section here in just a second. The final portion of this story comes by House Speaker Cameron Sexton. So I said, there was, there was three things, right? That they were going to change or, or take up during this, this special session. The immunity protections, liability protections, sorry. The telehealth. And the final thing they're going to take up is something here that Cameron Sexton, and this is exactly how it's presented in the Tennessean quote. House Speaker Cameron Sexton, I'm quoting the Tennessean, not quoting Cameron Sexton. This is what the Tennessean says. House Speaker Cameron Sexton said the legislature would bring about harsher penalties for some protesters. Now, if you don't see the inherent problem in that sentence already, then we should probably pause for a second to break it down. There are, there should be no penalties for protesters. You get what I'm saying? There should, very, very, very rarely, I'm talking rarity on a basis that you would almost never, ever see. Should there be penalties against protesters? Protesting is a protected right that is a God given thing. It is not, it is not protected by the constitution. The constitution just enshrines the enumerated powers by which the federal government cannot encroach upon those God given rights. God given right of being able to protest is one of them. So a penalty against a protester would be a major problem. That sentence already is ripe with some sense of constitutional violation until you go on to see what Sexton actually said. Here's what Sexton said, quote, "I am very appreciative of the call to strengthen existing laws against those who deface property, who escalate peaceful protest into acts of aggression and those who seek violence towards law enforcement and judicial members." Just a problem with I have, the, the way that the Tennessean and pretty much everyone's presenting some of this stuff right now is there has to be a line of delineation between what is actual protest and what then delves into violence. Can't have penalties.
Whoever wrote that in the Tennessean is stupid and I hope that they heard me say it. Cause that's what, cause you read the quote, right? People who are like trying to hurt the building, that's not protesting. I'm so tired of this. Like for a second, I was worried, I was worried that that was in the legislation, like the word protesters. And I'm like, oh, of course. Some activists at the Tennessean decided to put, to write protester in there.
Yeah.
What a jerk.
I know, man.
What a jerk. I hope they get hit by a bus. Seriously, like politically, metaphorically, figuratively, come on, I'm not a violent person.
Well, and it's going to be a weird segue into the national stories. By the way, we're in this radio dot live, real news radio dot live since our landing page for everything real news related. Go there, find stuff. Another quick thing I want to plug to forgoodgovernment.com, number forgoodgovernment.com. We have incredible stuff going on right now with the Nashville taxpayer protection act, getting rid of 34% property tax hike that just passed in Nashville. If you're in the middle Tennessee area and you want to get involved, we have door knocking coming up. We're maybe starting some texting campaigns soon. We're trying to man as many people as possible at the voting locations for Thursday's primary vote as we possibly, possibly can. We're doing fantastic, inching ever closer each day to our goal. If you're in the Nashville area, reach out to me if you want to be involved. It's going to have a fantastic time. I think our buddy Eric's going to be doing some stuff for us. It's awesome. Eric came out and hung out with me at the Howard building, really got to know each other, had some awesome conversations, dipped our toe into a little bit of the conspiracy theory waters. Moving into the national stories, though, one thing I was going to say is I, I, I think we're just in such strangely unprecedented times that some of the, some of the institutions just can't keep up. The structures that we've relied upon in the past just were not, they, I don't think they were designed to handle some of the things we're asking them to handle. Here's the headline coming from the New York Times this morning. Again, one of the paywalls I had to get around using this pocket account. And I am saying pocket like a jean pocket, like you, you put your phone in a pocket thing. Here's the headline, why the botched New York City primary has become the November nightmare. Actually, the three of us were speaking about this just before we came in here this morning. Nearly six weeks later, six weeks after the primary, nearly six weeks later, two congressional races remain undecided. And officials are trading blame over the mishandling of tens of thousands of mail-in ballots. Election officials in New York City widely distributed mail-in ballots for the primary on June 23rd, which featured dozens of hard fought races. The officials had hoped to make voting much easier, but you always had to see that but there, but they did not seem prepared for the response. More than 10 times the number of absentee ballots received in recent elections in the city. More than 10 times. I don't know. I don't know what they expected. I honestly don't know what they expected. It was the middle of a pandemic shutdown and they pushed it on June 23rd.
And just so y'all know, they don't always get to count or have to count all the absentee ballots. Because most of the time, the absentee ballots aren't enough to sway the election. So if that's the case, they don't have to count them all.
Right?
So sometimes they don't even have to count the like 0.02% of ballots of total ballots, which are absentee and paper and whatever. They're having to count all of everybody's votes in absentee ballot.
Yeah.
And it's all paper. And there's only like 200 people that work for counting, you know? The counting office, you know? And, and a lot of them don't know how to count because they were educated in New York.
Now nearly six weeks later, two closely watched congressional races remain undecided and major delays in counting. A deluge of 400,000, 400,000 mail-in ballots and other problems are being cited as examples of challenges facing the nation as it looks toward conducting a November general election during the pandemic, largely done by mail-in process. Governor Andrew Cuomo and other officials are trading blame. This is my favorite part of this whole story. Governor Cuomo.
It's Trump's fault.
Yes, man. And it's, it's de Blasio's fault. De Blasio is porting Cuomo, Cuomo is pointing to somebody else. Cuomo then points at the election officials themselves. It's just a beautiful disaster to watch unfold. Cuomo said though, that the postal service is coming under criticism over whether it is equipped to handle the sharp increase in ballots. Election lawyers said one of the areas of concern is New York City was that the mail-in ballots have pre, sorry, the mail-in ballots have prepaid returned envelopes. The postal service apparently had difficulty processing some of them correctly. And as a result, an unknown, here's terrible thing, an unknown number of votes, perhaps thousands, who knows? Perhaps thousands may have been wrongfully disqualified because of a lack of postmark. What they're saying is that they shouldn't, they shouldn't have postmark. There's no need for postmark. It's been prepaid. That's the point of the mail-in process. But some people who are either not trained properly or because the postal service has never been asked to do it to this level before inadvertently, known nefarious motivation. I would presume not trying to get anything across, no bad motivation, no ill intent. They just like, they've never done it before. So they threw a bunch of these things up because they thought it was supposed to have postmark.
Here's the funny thing with the New York Times with Cuomo, with the post office in New York City and the election commission and all that stuff. They're not, they're not wrongfully disqualified. If they didn't make it to the election commission. They're not, they're not wrongfully disqualified. If they didn't make it to the election commission on time, they're rightfully disqualified.
Right.
Now, the problem is, if anyone besides the voter made them wrongfully disqualified, then that person's interfering in an election. Right? So the reason everyone's pointing fingers is because there may have been a crime committed. Okay? Or at least a violation of regulatory code. You know what I'm saying? Because interfering in an election is a major federal crime. And, and the other thing too is like Democrats don't want to be the ones to tell people that their votes have been disqualified. That's the other weird, funny thing. They are disqualified and they're not wrongly disqualified. They're not wrongly. There's a time limit. There's a time limit where it has to get to certain people, the people who can't count. It has to get to them so they can try to count. But that's what's so funny, but it's like their bias is dripping in the story is what I'm saying. It's dripping. Because like they are disqualified. And the other thing I said, Democrats don't want to be the people saying your vote didn't count. They're just, that's like, that's like to them saying God isn't real.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's like, it's like them saying my deity doesn't exist. Your vote doesn't count. It's like saying, don't believe all women, you know? It's like that. And, and that's what's so funny. They don't, in New York, they don't want to enforce any of the rules. But at the same time, there are rules so people can be sued. Election, election officials can, can referral people for prosecution. You know what I'm saying? All this kind of stuff. But those two things are in conflict with each other, that there are rules and there's people who don't want to enforce rules. And then the New York Times doesn't even want to like touch about it, but we have to talk about it because, you know, elections matter. It matters who wins. It's not like it doesn't matter and ele- elections aren't making people, about making people feel good about themselves. They're about electing somebody.
Right, right.
Right? It's just, the whole thing is hilarious to me. Yeah, those people didn't get it on time. Yeah, it's because you decided to do mail-in ballots. Your fault. Your fault. And those people's votes don't count. Your fault.
What's, what's interesting about that angle is that when the president said, well, let's go ahead and move back the election in parts so that people can have better infrastructure to be able to better count votes. What's going to happen when the, the results come in saying that the president has won, our, our current executive gets another four terms?
Right.
And then they go to court saying, well, we didn't want to delay the election. Then he's going to turn around and say, well, yeah, this is why I wanted to move it back. And all you guys were against it then, and now you're trying to say that you're for it because you lost.
But it won't matter because no one cares about hypocrisy anymore, right Zig?
Well, no, no, but that, that might be a very valid legal argument. That, that, that might be brought before people in courts. Is when the president said, well, let's extend this. And then all these people do this stuff vote by mail. And then so and so loses. And now they're trying to go to the court. Then the president's going to turn around and say, well, no, you shouldn't be able to do that. We wanted to extend this and you said, no. That's your fault.
That would be relevant if they said we had no choice. Like when a judge is like, well, why did you do this? Why am I in the position of, of deciding whether or not these ballots are good or bad, or why am I a judge, the person trying to decide who won an election? Cause that's the point we may get to. And they're going to say, we had to do absentee. And I think, um, there would be good evidence say they did not have to do the wide ranging voter rolls. You could have just said, hey, this is your duty and you, it may be a danger to you, but you need to go out and vote. And you don't have to. No one's ever had to go out and vote, ever. No one, ever. You know?
Well, lending some credence to what both y'all are saying, this, this article goes on to say that thousand more ballots, thousands more ballots in, in the city were discarded by election officials for quote, minor errors. Or not even sent to voters until the day before the primary, making it all but impossible for the ballots to be returned on time. Now, one of the things, the minor errors they're talking about is that several thousand of these ballots showed up without a signature. And that's, goes a little bit to what Shyne's point was saying. Well, that's not an improper disqualification then, because if you show up and don't sign your name on election day, you won't be allowed to vote then either. At least the way it's handled in New York City, from some of the, the election commission folks that I was listening to or watching, give commentary or reading about later on. They've said that's a similar way of the handle. They take the signature and they match it with the database they have, the signature of what you signed when you registered to vote. I suppose it doesn't matter how many years ago it was or whatever else, but you have to ask, match something up. Now, they're not like qualified people to, to, they're not going to be able to say whether that signature is exactly that person or not. I mean, I suppose you could fake it. But to send something in without a signature at all, well, what are they supposed to do? It's part of the requirement on voting day or a mail-in. And here, it goes to Zig's point. In recent days, President Trump has, has also jumped into the fray, New York Times reporting. Repeatedly citing primary in New York City for his unfounded, unfounded claims that mail-in voting is susceptible to fraud. There is no evidence that the primary results were tainted by criminal malfeasance, according to a wide array of election officials and representatives of campaigns. Now, that's a very important part for, for my opinion, my analysis of this New York Times story. I, I think if you wanted to, arguendo, let's, let's go with New York Times here, just, just for the sake of talking about what they're talking about. They say there's no evidence at all that this is susceptible to fraud or criminal malfeasance. Cool, fine. Let's assert that. The whole point of me bringing this story up is not even to necessarily diminish the mail-in process in and of itself. It's certainly not even necessarily to focus on the fact that you could exploit it, which you obviously could do. We've had several examples of that happening. Several states use mail-in only. And operate perfectly fine. There are several states in the United States that only vote by mail. I mean exclusively, there are no precincts to walk into. Polling places to walk into. The story, in my opinion, you can still go with what the New York Times says of like, well, there's no, there's no criminal malfeasance taking place. Yeah, but you still have a 400,000 plus worth of problem, don't you? The story should point out that the difficulties that will happen in major cities that are trying this thing on such a large scale for the very first time. You don't have to have a criminal motivation for negligence to be at play.
And incompetence.
Yes, right? You don't have to have some nefarious intent for people to just be purely incompetent. And you don't even necessarily have to be incompetent to miss something to the tune of 400,000 mail-in ballots because you've never done it before. I mean, everyone has a daily job, nine to five stuff. Man, what, what would you do if your, if your job came and you said, by, by the way, you need to do your current job? And we kind of have to like train you up to deal with a couple million plus versions of things that you've never done before? Peace, Deuce's, man, I'm going to go get another job. I, I mean, what do you do? And here's the biggest thing that I want to kick to both of y'all, and then I want to kick to the Facebook, YouTube, Twitch chat, wherever you're coming from, unified chat. Let me know how you're feeling about this. All of this stuff boiled down, synthesizing it through the analysis, we just put it through a second ago. Okay, so we got a problem. Maybe there's some, some foul play here. We got a problem. Maybe people have never done it before, so it's just a, a procedural situation. They just don't know how to do it. They just don't have the infrastructure built out yet. Governor Cuomo is blaming the election board. The election board is blaming Governor Cuomo. De Blasio is blaming all of them. At the end of the day, ultimately, this goes back to what Zig brought up a second ago. People will not trust the outcomes. It does, it doesn't matter how we got here. It does not matter. If you got there with 500,000 votes not being counted and a Democrat wins because they extend the period. If you got there with 500 votes not being counted and a Republican wins because, you get what I'm saying? The real problem here is that people will not trust the outcome. The narratives have already been spun for weeks, if not months, that this is going to happen. And this has become a very, very damaging narrative for the country right now. Do you get what I'm saying? Am I, am I being too bombastic with this? Let me kick it to Zig first and just say, that's my sincere fear about stories like this. Is yes, in a representative republic, you want to make sure that you elect the right person. But ultimately, the beautiful design and the great experiment that we've had in America is somewhat contingent upon the peaceful transition of power. I mean, in comparison to other great civilizations in the past, they didn't really have that. And when they tried to replicate it year after year after year, at some point, a kink was thrown in there where you didn't have a peaceful transition of power. I don't know, man, military showed up, right? In new day and age, you'd have tanks showing up that are pushing you by the end of a gun barrel to one ballot in front of another ballot. Part of the American design is based upon this idea that you have a dialogue, you have a debate, you convince your fellow man, and you transition the power peacefully to the next person. If people don't believe that that has happened, the whole system fails. Am I going too out of bounds with this though Zig? Go ahead.
No, I think that's exactly right. And I think people to, to some, well, I don't know. I think it's inevitable that, that people aren't going to trust votes, but part of the, part of the reason why then, then that was done was to discredit the, the current executive. So back, back in 2016, a vast conspiracy was launched to already discredit the gentleman. And now they're going to come back at it with, with round two through this mail-in ballot. So now, now they're going to launch another eight year or another four year conspiracy to, to make for a total of an eight year conspiracy just to get people riled up when in reality, a lot of people are not doing the right things to pitch people policy. They're just getting people riled up to vote. And that's, that, that's not a good way of doing things. Then, that is the larger issue is that relying on these sorts of schemes and complaints to drive up, to drive more people to vote, that's just not going to be sustainable for forever. And that's, that's what stuff like this is. It's part of a greater strategy to rile people up to get them to vote.
Yeah.
I don't think that's right.
Man, and riling people up to get them to vote, you could also rile people up to get them to do a bunch of other stuff that you may not be accounting for.
That's, that's what we've seen. We've seen people, when, when they're riled up to vote, now they've been riled up to destroy buildings. Okay, to, to destroy federal buildings and then complain and act like victims when the feds come in. Okay? That's the issue is that when you keep riling people up, destructive things will happen. And then people can't, and, and then people turn around and act surprised like, oh wow, golly gee whiz, I never thought this would happen. And it's like, what do you mean? What do you mean?
Jeff just said in Facebook, by the way, there's too much of a chance of fraud with mail-in ballots. Your voter rolls need to be cleaned up so that dead people and animals are not getting ballots. You've heard multiple stories right now, dead people getting ballots. Jessica just said in Facebook a second ago. Uh, I think she lives on Pennsylvania airway. Jessica said, uh, going in person with my daughter to see if spikes and cases don't get any worse, otherwise still in person, but just me. Uh, Sean, let me kick it to you, man, before I go into this next story here. Is it too bombastic to say that, you know, the subsequent fallout of some of this, some of this mail-in stuff might be that people just won't trust the results? And if we don't trust the results, coupled with, again, I'm, I'm leaning into slight fear mongering here, but coupled with everything we have going on the streets right now. Are you like this, this weird sort of precipice of, of revolution, whatever? I mean, that's, that's serious language right there. Do you get what I'm saying though? Like that, that, that feeling stoking those fires that are already there is just, seems a little bit too dire.
I feel like we were going to have a hard time without the mail-in ballots.
Yeah, wow.
Like before you even add that in as a wrinkle, the election was going to be a difficult time. With people accepting the outcome. I don't know if everybody remembers, but we have a party that still doesn't accept the outcome from the 2016 election. You know what I mean? And, and Republicans aren't above doing the exact same thing. They're not above doing that. They're not like, that's not like out of the question completely. But as, as a part of my response, and I don't want to take up too much time because I know we have other stories to get to. But I have a story from the week here. U S election 2020, Washington insiders preparing for counting chaos, and that's a quote, counting chaos and states seceding. Washington insiders, Trump people and Biden people and did like a Dungeons and Dragons type turn-based war games about what would happen over the weekend. Okay? Um, and this is from the week, U S election 2020, Washington insiders preparing for counting chaos and states seceding. Where they war gamed what happened with different kinds of results. They had four different scenarios. All of them ended in street level violence. In one particular scenario, here, I'll even read this quote here. "All of our scenarios ended in both street level violence and political impasse." "A Georgetown law professor and former defense attorney, blah, 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 blah. According to the Financial Times, two of the scenarios began with a narrow, quote, narrow victory by presumptive presidential nominee Joe Biden and an inclusive, inconclusive Electoral College result. In both cases, Mr. Trump threatened to federalize the National Guard to skew or shut out ballot recounts in contested states. And Bill Barr, U S Attorney General, helped Republican legislature certify results that contradicted their Democratic governors. In a separate scenario in which Biden won the popular vote in the Electoral College, the group, the group hypothesized that Trump would only agree to leave office after being promised a blanket pardon by the incoming administration. The experts also considered what would happen if Biden lost the election despite winning the popular vote, as happened to Hillary Clinton in 2016." This is where it gets weird. "They concluded that Biden's party might not allow him to admit defeat in such a circumstance. With the Democratic candidate instead claiming voter suppression had swung the result. In an exercise playing out this scenario, Democrats ended up persuading Democratic governors of Michigan and Wisconsin, two states that supported Trump in 2016, to send Biden supporters, Biden supporters to Electoral College, presumably even though Trump won, right? In the ensuing chaos, California, Oregon, and Washington states said they would secede from the United States if Mr. Trump was sworn in. The Times reports, "The Democratic-controlled House of Representatives asserted that Mr. Biden was true president. Republican-controlled Senate said that it was Mr. Trump." And as a result of that stalemate, three states, the Democratic Party convinced three states to say, if Mr. Trump is sworn in, we will secede from the United States. That happened over the weekend. So every scenario they could come up with, there was street level violence in all major cities. Every single scenario, every single one.
I think there's a couple of things to talk about. A, I don't think that they think that this stuff is realistic, but they're using it as a projection for their wishes.
I agree.
I don't think anybody thinks that this is-
What do you call it? Like false dichotomy is kind of what this is? Like false choice? Like basically all these things are saying, if here's all the things that could happen if Trump doesn't step down. We could have all this, like it's false dichotomy, false choice stuff, but this is the people in DC though. These are people who could at least try to make these things happen in a time of chaos with the counting ballots and all that stuff.
And that's, that's what they're trying to encourage the public to support and their voter base to support. But also B, one thing that, that people need to, to get straight is that there is no such thing, or, or what people are calling the popular vote is not the popular vote, it's the majority vote. But guess what? We live in a republic and the majority doesn't always win. All right? That's the majoritarian vote. That's not popular. What's popular is what's been used. Okay? And that's been the Electoral College. The Electoral College is the popular vote. And people ought to, to, to understand that. Hillary Clinton did not win the popular vote. The Electoral College is the popular vote. She won the majoritarian vote. But again, in a republic, the majority does not get their way by design.
By design.
Okay? And, and that ought to be corrected. And people, people, people can't keep saying these things.
And, and just to clarify what Zig said, he said that thoughts that people think about it differently should be corrected, not that we should correct the fact that we have a republic. Cause I'll tell you right now, that's a beautiful distinction Zig, that you just articulated there. In the majoritarian vote, because you do not want to be that sheep when two wolves are voting on what's for lunch, right?
Well, we're not three, we're not 350 million people. We're 50 sovereign states. That's what we are. There's not a population of the United States where like, I know we're all Americans, but we're not this group of people. We're a group of geographical locations. That's what we are. It's very important to remember, and it's very, it's distinctly different too, right? Like the sovereignty is not invested in you necessarily. It's in the land you live on. That's, and that's important to remember. Like there is no majority vote or like, that's a great point Zig. That's a really good point. Because the person who wins the most votes in each state, who gets the majority vote in each state, who wins the popular vote in each state, that, that's the person who gets enough votes from the Electoral College to become president. And that's what's important. We are 50 sovereign states, not 350 million people.
Well, and even in the states, the, the electors don't always have to follow the popular vote anyways.
Actually, a judge just ruled that they do.
Well, no, but that, no, that, that was for a fine. The judge said that a state was allowed to fine people for disobeying the popular vote. But they, they didn't say that electors always have to follow the ma- majority vote in a state. If I'm not mistaken, perhaps.
It was, it was, yeah, that was the ruling essentially is if a state already has a law that says that, that their electors have to follow, that law is constitutional. But those states that don't have laws that say that the electors have to follow popular, then they can still do whatever they were doing before.
But even then, granted, typically those laws are, are fines.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
They don't override the elector's choice, but-
That's valid to hear. Yeah, right.
The, David's point still, still stands. Again, it's not a, a popular vote. What the popular vote is, is the Electoral College, because that's what's been around for so long. And furthermore, by definition, what popular means is it means a, a skill or something that's in limited supply. or something that's in limited supply that a lot of people like that one person has. So the popular kids in school, not everyone was popular in school, right? And it was a handful of people. So what is popular is limited and that's the Electoral College. So people again would do well to correct people when they use these wrong distinctions. Hillary Clinton never won the popular vote. She won the majority vote. And in a republic, that's not popular.
Let's see Shaw Dog, what's up Shaw Dog said in YouTube, dead people voting isn't the problem. It's the confirmation process that we should be worried about.
It's chain of custody. Chain of custody is the thing we haven't emphasized for like 25 years. We've been emphasizing access and not chain of custody. And it's a, it's, it's the, what do they say? The chickens are coming home to roost on that.
Right? Hey, Jeff just said in Facebook that Electoral College is the only way to ensure that every state vote matters. Sorry, that every state matters. And and I look, I, I think this is a larger problem than just the voting situation. The last 11 minutes we have in the program here, shifting to the last topic of the day, this Daily Wire story. I think people are starting to lose faith in in leadership in general. And maybe it's not just political leadership, maybe they're losing faith in in leadership across the board. And I don't care what institution we're talking about, whether it be religious or political or philosophical or academic or, I don't know, I don't care, man. Even the medical and science community, goodness gracious, every single person is trading off their own sort of appeal to authority of of my doctor is better than your doctor, this guy is more qualified than your guy. And and now we're just pitting logical fallacies against each other. We've been playing that game for a while. But look at this next headline here. When people start to lose faith in in the leadership's words, in the in the words they choose to use, the things that they say, coupled with the fact that they start to lose faith in the process. I mean, even even look at what Shaw Dog just said here. It's a confirmation process they should be worried about. If people are losing faith in the entirety of all of it, the rhetoric, the narrative that backs up the facts or lack thereof, we have a major problem on our hands. And here's a little bit what I'm, what I'm saying, okay? So here's the, here's the Daily Wire headline. DC Mayor Exempts John Lewis Funeral Attendees From City's Quarantine Restrictions. And this is a, dare I say partisan, if not even borderline hyper partisan headline intake on this story. But nevertheless, the the point still remains. Now, according to the mayor in DC's July 24th order, it titled, " requirement to self quarantine after non essential travel during the COVID-19 public health emergency." It essentially states that any residents who want to travel to high risk areas for non essential reasons must self quarantine for 14 days and monitor themselves for symptoms of the virus. Lawmakers who attended the funeral of late Representative John Lewis in Atlanta earlier this week were exempt from Washington DC's self quarantine restrictions, according to the DC mayor, that came directly from Bowser's, Bowser's office. Now, now the mandate orders some of the the following here. All residents and persons traveling to or from high risk areas within the prior 14 days for non essential travel must self quarantine for 14 days. Two, persons who are self quarantining after non essential travel must stay at their residence or in a hotel room, leaving only for essential medical appointments or treatment or to obtain food or other essential goods when the delivery of food or other essential goods to the residence or hotel is not feasible. Not invite or allow guests or other caregivers. Self monitor for symptoms. This goes on for a couple more statements. Now, this order remains in effect until October 9th and goes on to define what high risk areas are as locations where the seven day moving average, the seven day moving daily average for COVID-19 cases is 10. That's one zero, 10 or more per 100,000 persons. Now, by that metric, the state of Georgia is considered high risk and then some. A recent federal report listed that the red zone in the red zone, because of its skyrocketing cases of viruses, Atlanta's Fulton County averages 228 cases per 100,000 people in the last seven days. You could take this one of two ways. This this statistic is staggering in a medical sense that people need to be careful, stay safe out there. You know how I feel about that. It's a different story. This point of the story here, though, is that the number is 10. To be a high risk state, it's 10 per 100,000. Georgia, this Fulton County is 228. So by the DC mayor's own standards, this is a high risk area times a bunch. Now, now regarding why attendees at Lewis's funeral escaped the strictures of self quarantine, Bowser's press secretary characterized the ceremony as an essential government activity. Debatable, but whatever.
Weird.
Right? Saying the government activity is essential and the capital of the United States is exempt from the mayor's order. Now, that latter part, you can maybe, you can maybe have a conversation about, about, you know, maybe it's a federal DC distinction.
We've always known there's different rules for them than there is for us. We've always known that, we've always known that. We're sick of it. We're just sick of it.
It's just one more reason. It's another feather in the cap, it's another straw on the camel's back.
It's a grain of sand on the heap is what it is. It's another snowflake in the avalanche is what it is.
Yeah. And it's, I just don't know which one's going to break it, man. And you couple all this stuff going on and then in the very same time, what do you want to do? You want to come out the next day and tell people to take this seriously? What do you expect them to do? You want to come out the next day and tell people to respect the results of a vote? You want to tell people to respect their fellow man and take this disease seriously, this virus seriously? Y'all have to as well then. You have to as well. And you saw the lack of social distancing. Everybody watched that, John, or at least portions of the videos. You've seen the picture that has now become a meme, you saw the lack of social distancing. And I get it, okay? I understand. These people, as high profile as they are, Obama, Clinton, Bush, major legislators. I mean, it's like the elite of the elite in this country, at least as far as it's to a political standard. They are probably being tested every 24 hours, or at least those around them are probably being tested 24 hours. Now, if somebody would have come out to me and said, by the way, one of the reasons why this is not applicable to these people is because that entire room full of people that you just saw is being tested 24 hours a day. Or maybe they have some cure that we don't know about yet, but whatever, whatever. We all know that the virus is not as woke as it's been pitched to us before. So if somebody would have come out and said like, like the president has claimed to have done for him, that's his response most of the time when they ask him why he's not wearing a mask. His response is literally, they're testing me every single day. Everyone around me is tested every 24 hours as well. I know who is it, who has it and who doesn't has it have it sooner than anybody else would. And we know everybody that we're coming into contact with. As far as our precautions are concerned, we're way more cautious than you all are. If that's the response, that's not the response here. The response I'm reading is that the mayor's office finalized in the article, the mayor's office still deems the funerals of regular people as non essential activity. You get what I'm saying now? So people are seeing our representatives gather together in a church, no less, espousing their beliefs. But churchgoers can't do the same thing.
And people who've had relatives die who can't have funerals, what about them? What about those people?
Their mother's funeral.
Right, exactly. They can't put their their loved ones to rest in the normal way, in the way we do it in our culture, to send them off. It's terrible.
They even asked the 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 mayor's office whether attendees of non government funerals, specifically saying that, what about attendees of non government funerals in Atlanta in higher risk areas? Are they still required to self quarantine under this order? And the mayor's office said, yeah, yeah, they are. So this, this, I, I just, I, they're obviously not blind to being able to see this, they just don't care. I just don't think they, I just don't think they care. But it's yet another thing where I'm saying in the totality of all of this stuff coupled together, it has to be seen as a larger scale. The voting problem, the mail in problem, the lack of faith in that institution, the continual just slathering on of layer after layer after layer, it becomes saturated with distrust. You can't see through it anymore. There are too many layers, the veneer is too thick. I can't see truth anymore. It's not just a fog, bro, it's a bricked wall.
Well, the 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 problem, Grant, is the unrelenting political opportunism. And that is often what frustrates people. More or less what happened was these people were given a special privilege to give a bunch of political speeches.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and that's, that's the real issue is shutting down things for political opportunism. Okay, and over over time, I think, I think voters start to like that. Wow, it's not everything should be a political opportunity. There are things that we hold sacred and dear to our hearts that do not involve making it into a political opportunity, whether that's sports, you know, whether whether it's one of these things that then that we used to call America's game. I, I don't, I don't know if if we can consider any of these games this anymore. But what, whether it's sports or funerals, to use these things has has political platforms. It's not that people object to political platforms. It's that using things that we hold sacred and trying to cash that in to a political return, that is the core of the issue.
It cheapens it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It makes it less sacred, which makes it less desirable. Which side note, you mentioned sports, nobody's watching baseball or basketball. Like more people watch. Like I think Sean, not Sean Hannity, Tucker Carlson is getting double the amount of the average basketball game.
Yeah.
And baseball's even worse.
I think you're right, Zig. For such a long time, everybody was on the same page about carving out these areas. And it was, it was sort of an unspoken thing. We all had this unspoken agreement amongst each other that in our late night comedy, dude, I don't, I don't want to be inundated with your, I don't want to be, I don't want to hear your politics, man. I'm inundated with that enough already. Now, on occasion, when you have a politician on, yes, we'll get in there because it makes sense in the context. I, when I'm watching sports, I don't want to hear politics. Everything can't become politics. We will go insane. Look at what's happening right now. We will literally go insane. I mean, this, this stuff coupled with the COVID shutdown, this stuff is doing something psychologically to human beings. I I'm not exaggerating, I, I truly believe that. And I think there's data to back that up.
No, the 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 last thing then that I want to point out before we go is that this constant political opportunism and and breaking down the barriers of what is sacred, to some degree, people feel like that is infringing upon their privacy or the right to be left the heck alone. Life typically sucks, okay? And when, when you have people trying to sell you and pitch you something, when you're just trying to be left alone to recharge, to be yourself, to go into the next day, that's a problem.
That's a great point, man. I couldn't have said it better myself. Let's end it on that. My name is Mr. Hunter, by the way, Zig, one of our buddies for sure, man, David Shawn Thompson, all signing off this morning. We will be back tomorrow doing a big, love each and every one of y'all sincerely, seriously. If you want to help out with the Nashville property tax thing, hit me up directly, we'll get you plugged in. We will see y'all tomorrow.